Greetings, everyone. Welcome to The Soul of the War. My name is Alexis Branch, your host and the founder. Today, we will be interviewing Ryan Middleton, candidate for county council. How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
I'm well, I'm well. So glad to have you on. So let's just hop right into it. Tell me a little bit about yourself, your background, where you grew up, and just so the viewers can know a little bit about you.
Sure. Well, I'm a native Prince Georgean. I'm from Bowie, Maryland. I was raised there. I grew up doing martial arts down the street, and that was my first job during high school as well, teaching kids and adults alike. I still live in Bowie now with my wife Jasmine and our son Rowan and our dog Max. And yeah, we're raising our kids in Prince George's County where I grew up. I went to Cornell University for undergrad and then Michigan State University College of Law, and then decided to come back here and get started in public service.
Nice. So are you, you're an attorney?
Yes.
What kind of law do you practice?
Well, right now, I work in the county executive's office, so I'm not exactly practicing law per se. But I am taking the skills that I acquired in law school and using them to work for Prince George's County residents on the current county stat director for Prince George's County. I manage a team of data analysts. We set and monitor performance metrics for every county government agency, and we're intimately involved in the county's budget process.
Nice, nice. Can you share even just a little bit more about what you do in the county executive's office, that role? Like, as far as the budget and the data that you're looking at, what kind of data results have you been seeing thus far?
Well, we'll be here all day if I say all the data that we're going to. We have different priority areas: beautification, flooding permitting, reducing violent crime, things of that sort. And we try to make sure that we are pursuing all data-driven approaches to ensure that services are being delivered in an efficient manner. We're always checking, double-checking, and seeing where we can do better, where we can improve. Even when the numbers are good, we always try to interrogate those numbers to make sure that what we're seeing on our computer screens is actually being reflected on the ground. One of the things that I do as county stat director is I make sure that I'm in our communities. I attend HOA and Civic Association meetings throughout the entire county. I organize neighborhood walks with different communities to really get a ground view of what's going on with anything, whether it's guards, litter and illegal dumping, with flooding issues, trash pickup, all of those things, so we can make sure that residents feel, number one, that they're being heard, and also so I can ensure that our numbers actually reflect reality.
That's awesome. And I am just going off the assumption that when, because you have access to this data, you are able to, I guess, come up with some ideas surrounding programs that would be able to help the county. Do you have any ideas in particular surrounding the data that you have been looking at when it comes to violent crime, when it comes to maternal health, et cetera?
Well, certainly. So we don't, we don't exactly, county stat doesn't deal with maternal health as it is. But when it comes with like violent crime, the data that we're using and that we're looking at, it really helps us work with the police department to know where to direct resources and where violent crime is happening, so we can make sure that, number one, the community is on alert of that. And number two, that we're being proactive about prevention.
Now, I do have a question. This wasn't one of the questions I wrote down, but since we were discussing finances. When it comes to grants, right? So it was my understanding that there was a lot of conversations a couple of months back about people receiving grant money for organizations, nonprofits, et cetera, because they had personal relationships with various members on the county council, so they were able to get funding for, you know, their program or whatever. But those programs weren't really performing to the amount of money that was given to them, you know what I'm saying? And as a member of county council, what provisions do you feel like you can put in place to help prevent bias when it comes to like money coming in and grant money going out? And making sure that, you know, it's going to the right people and not just because you know this person or you know that person?
Well, as the data guy, I'll certainly be pursuing any and all. I believe some of those grants are discretionary to the council members. So the council member Middleton's grant will definitely be relying on data-driven approaches, and we will certainly evaluate performance when it comes to delivery of grants.
That's awesome. What programs do you think particularly you would be looking for?
I really want us to make sure that we are investing in our kids. I want to pursue any and all policies that will deliver a great return on investment to county residents. In some ways, that's going to be defined by finances, and in other ways, that's going to be defined by investing in our future. And I believe there's no better investment than investing in our children. I myself am a parent. I'm raising a three-year-old in Prince George's County. I want to make sure that he has a solid future. I want to make sure everyone's kids have a solid future. I will invest in mentorship programs, and I'll, you know, pursue grants from my office. I'll also be cheerleading and championing any potential resources that we can get from the state or federal government as well.
That's awesome, particularly towards education?
Absolutely.
Okay. Speaking of programs, how do you feel about the current issue surrounding the snow removal in some communities? What was your take on that? I know a lot of communication came out about people's streets not being touched. I know I was one of those residents that, down to the fourth day, our streets still looked iced over. And I did see a county council member, Edward Rose, shoveling people's driveways. I did see Jolene Ivy, and she came out and tried to lend her support for people to be able to reach out to her to assist as well. Now, this is a two-part question for you. Where exactly do you feel the ball was dropped on that issue? And what would you have done, had you been a member in the county council at that time? What would you have done to address the issue head-on?
So someone asked me the same question this past weekend. They asked me, what would you have done last week during the, you know, the delays during, with snow removal? And I have a bit of an issue with the premise of that question, because the snow removal delays came as a result of many of our county government agencies not having adequate resources to address snow removal.
Okay.
Our county agencies, our Department of Public Works, they had people working back-to-back 12-hour shifts over the course of several days. So it's not as if people weren't out there working, but obviously, we didn't have enough people out there.
So was that rumor true about the salt, like we ran out of salt and that was the problem? Or the trucks were down, they ran out of trucks, or?
Well, I'm not entirely sure exactly what specific issue there was with regards to the salt or trucks, but even, even still, that still speaks to a resource issue.
Yes.
And these issues, it's not as if like, we'll just get more trucks and just get more people. These issues are baked into our budget process.
Absolutely. The contracts, right?
Well, no, they're baked into the budget and how much our agencies are allowed to spend on allocating their resources to address things like snow removal. And unless we find more revenues for, to fund delivering county government services and increase the amount of services that we're able to deliver, then unfortunately, our agencies are going to have to continue to do more with less. And what we saw last week with the snow removal issue, that's what less looks like.
I agree with that to an extent, right? Because I told you my background is continuity, so I am a planner. And this is not the first time we've had this issue with snow removal. I can recall this issue maybe two or three years ago, where we had the same exact issue, where the roads were horrible, they weren't touched. And we're not just talking about, at that time, neighborhoods, we're talking about actual roads. The main roads were a major issue. And you would think, because this was something that had happened just a year, two years ago, that we would be able to have that emergency fund or that money planned and set aside to prepare, because every year we get snow. You know, it's not something that just pops up and it's like, oh, wow, we've never received this much snow. You know, we've had more snow than we had, you know, just this past, what, Thursday? We've had more than that. So I just don't understand how the resources weren't allocated or planned to that extent for our residents. And, and I'm not trying to be like that person, but my parents live in two different areas of the county, right? So my mom lives in Bowie where you are, my dad lives in Upper Marlboro, and my mom's streets were clean. Now, I'm not saying that priority is given to certain areas or certain communities within Prince George's County, but her community is majority Caucasian and majority older citizens. But it doesn't mean that somebody who is young like me and, you know, not living in a $500,000, $600,000 house shouldn't have clean roads, you know, when I get up and trying to take my daughter to school, trying to get to work, you know?
Sure. So you raised, you raised the issue about there should be money set aside. The thing about setting money aside is you have to have money to set aside.
So we don't have money?
We've been, we've, for the last several years, our county has been operating in deficits. We don't have a surplus. We have been trying to balance our budget in deficits. We've been asked, again, we've been, it's not just this year, it's been last year and the year before. Our county has been operating in deficits.
The pandemic made a big impact.
And asking, it wasn't, it's not, it's not just the pandemic, we had supply chain issues. We had inflation, has been a big issue for us. So we need to invest, and even, even before the pandemic, it's not like the county has just a slush fund that it can draw unlimited dollars from. We need more county government, more county resources and more, actually, we need more revenues to direct to these county government services. I'll tell you, I'll tell you another thing about the different aspects, because a lot of people like to compare service delivery in Prince George's County to other jurisdictions. Prince George's County, our residential to commercial tax base, the ratio of residential to commercial taxes, we rely 70% on residential taxes, 30% on commercial. If you look at our neighbors throughout the region, that trend is reversed. So you look at DC, Northern Virginia, Montgomery County, Howard County, the other counties, their tax base, so what they're using to fund their government is more or less 70% compared to 30% on residents, on residents. So our county's budget is primarily driven by residential taxes. So that burden for county government services is placed on, directly onto residents like me and like you. We need to reverse that trend.
I like that.
Because if we do that, then it'll be a lot easier for us to be able to direct more resources. Then we might have some money to set aside and direct extra resources in the event of, you know, a major snow event like we had last week.
Now, if that is the case, right, if we do the reverse, would residents be looking at lower taxes?
In a perfect world, sure. In a perfect world, I would love that. I'm sure you would too. You know, I'm a homeowner, and when I get that assessment in the mail, I'm like, okay, what are they going to get me for this year?
Yeah.
As I'm sure everyone, as sure you do and everyone in your audience does. So this is the way for us to get to where we're able to ensure that county government services are actually being delivered by increasing our commercial tax base, by creating more revenues, and by, you know, growing our budget. Because, case in point, Washington DC's Health and Human Services Agency, that one agency, their budget is equal to the Prince George's County government's entire budget. So one agency in DC basically has the entire budget of our entire county government.
To speak on businesses, right? I've seen a lot of various stories surrounding businesses not wanting to do business in Prince George's County. Now, we can speculate and say that it's the foot traffic or that it's just pure racism. But in what ways, as a county council member, will you support startup businesses within the county?
So we don't have to speculate. I've spoken to business owners who want to do business in Prince George's County. One of the issues that we have in Prince George's County is our permitting process. We need to streamline it. And now, a ton of work has been done to do that, but we have a long way to go in terms of streamlining permitting processes to make sure that when you want to do business in Prince George's County, that you're not waiting a year, two years, three years to open your doors. It'll hopefully just be a matter, you know, of a few months at that point. So that way, we can get you started, you can hit the ground running, and then, again, you can add to our commercial tax base. When you mentioned, you asked about startups, the same goes for some of our startup companies. You know, startups need access to capital, and if they're languishing in the permitting process and just losing money and not able to operate, then we're not doing them any favors. So I want to make sure we're streamlining processes, making it easier for people to do business in Prince George's County, so that way, we can be a more attractive destination for them.
Awesome. Now, let's kind of hop over into the actual race that you're running for. How do you feel currently about the election? What's fundraising looking like? And what's your relationship with those that are already on the county council?
Well, you mentioned fundraising. Fundraising reports actually came out today. And I'm happy that, in terms of our race, of the people who filed and met the filing deadline, we've raised order of magnitude more than everyone else in our race.
Wow. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, yes. So as of now, we're certainly in the financial lead, and we plan on being good stewards of those resources and meeting people where they are and getting our message out. And then you mentioned some of the, my relationship with other members of the council. I'm very proud to be endorsed by four current members of the county council.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
What four members?
Calvin Hawkins, the at-large member, Ingrid Watson, Juanika Fisher, and Sidney Harrison are currently supporting me as well. And I have friendships with other members of the council who have not endorsed me, even some who might have endorsed other people. I'm a professional, I don't take things personal. And, you know, even if they're endorsing another candidate, I'm perfectly happy to work with anyone and everyone on the county, because I believe we should all be on the same team.
I love that. You said, yeah, they're going to endorse other people, but I'll be happy to work with them once. I love it, because, I mean, it's like you're speaking like, yeah, well, when I win, you know, we're already, yeah. I love it. Thank you. Coming out of the pandemic, right? There has been a drug issue within the county as far, well, not just in the county, across the country, quite honestly. Now, marijuana is becoming legal to the forefront, and more people are able to utilize it for more recreational usage. In what ways? Because people have their own opinion on the use of marijuana, right? I feel like it's a gateway drug. You know, some people don't believe that. I think it's a gateway drug. What ways do you feel like you can support residents when it comes to drug abuse? And getting that support as far as people with mental health issues as well?
Well, if you look at current trends of the people who are arrested and brought to our jails by police, a good chunk of them usually are undergoing some sort of crisis episode, a mental health crisis episode, or they're undergoing some sort of a substance abuse episode. Those people need to be treated. That is a public health issue that needs to be addressed, and we have to allocate the proper resources and make sure that they're able to get back on their feet. I don't believe that having a mental health episode or going through some sort of substance abuse episode is in and of itself a criminal matter. I believe it's a public health issue, and we should address it as such.
Okay. Thank you. I guess, hopping back into emergencies very quickly, if Maryland was to ever see fires like California, what would you, as a leader, do to ensure the safety of your people beforehand in preparation and during the actual event?
Sure. Well, beforehand, again, it comes down to resources. My mantra is, your budget is your policy, and your policy is your budget. It depends, like, everything depends on how many resources you're allocating to whatever effort that you're pursuing. We need to make sure that our fire department is properly staffed and that they are properly supported with the kind of resources, the training, the technology, and the equipment that they need to meet, you know, such an emergency. So, number one, I'm not a fire expert, so I would consult with our fire department and ask them like, what do you need in, you know, such an emergency? And make sure that they, we do what we can, again, to create the kind of resources that they would need to meet those kinds of challenges. And yes, what I would do during such an emergency, well, I'd certainly use my platform to communicate any and all emergency protocols, but I would listen to the experts in our, in our fire department.
Perfect. Thank you. In what ways do you plan on supporting the police department? An announcement came out two or three days ago surrounding DC Police Department, and they were basically saying that they are extremely short on staff. They're having major issues with hiring, major issues with retention. Prince George's County, but they're not the only people that are dealing with that issue. A lot of people right now are having problems when it comes to retaining police officers. Police officers, on one hand, are saying that they don't feel supported when it comes to having to use force on other individuals with that, in certain situations, right? And then, on the other hand, people are saying they're too aggressive, they're, they're too, using too much force. So police don't feel comfortable doing their job, they don't feel supported. And then, on the other hand, citizens feel targeted, they feel attacked. County, as a county council member, what will you do to assist with making sure that police officers have the resources that they need, that they have the amount of individuals on hand, that they feel safe, that policy is written to make sure that they feel safe? What will you do? And is that an issue for you? Like, what's your perspective on both sides?
Well, certainly, we'd, the police have an impossible job. They're asked to solve crimes before they happen, like it's Minority Report. We need to make sure that they are properly staffed, that they have the right amount of training, and that they have the right amount of resources to do that job and solve crime. So that'll be what I would do, and advocate for the proper resources to be directed towards them. In 2020, I was the project manager for the county's police reform work group.
Oh, nice.
Yes, it was a months-long public review. Obviously, it was all virtual, but every meeting that we had was completely public, and we led a comprehensive review of every single law enforcement apparatus in Prince George's County. It was a, and we heard from every different thought leader that you could think of on, on the subject of law enforcement, of police and all of that as well. I believe that that kind of conversation went a long way in terms of informing the public and in terms of helping to create more transparency and accountability for the police department. We heard from police officers, we heard from people who have had issues, their own issues with the police department. I want to continue, obviously, the work isn't done. We submitted 50 different recommendations as a result of that. We've implemented the vast majority of those recommendations in the county for the police department. The job isn't done. There's more work to be done with that. So I certainly want to make sure that we're continuing those conversations and continuing to build trust in the community, but also with our police officers who put their lives on the line every day.
Absolutely. So final two questions, well, maybe final three, but the last one is kind of a quick question. So with it being Human Trafficking and Trafficking Awareness Month, do you have anything to say particularly to the public when it comes to staying on guard, staying safe, and ensuring that we're aware of our surroundings?
I think you just said it. That is a massive problem, and it's, it's a problem that is particularly an issue in our region with Maryland and Prince George's County being sort of like the Mid-Atlantic area. We're kind of caught in the middle of that entire epidemic of human trafficking. So I certainly want to make sure that everyone is taking care of themselves. If we do have victims, they should, they should receive the kind of treatment and resources that they would need. And I know that there are numerous nonprofits who are helping victims of human trafficking. I certainly want to promote them and do what we can to ensure that we create partnerships to not only prevent human trafficking, but also anyone who's a victim of it, help them out as well.
If you had to say that the number one issue amongst your residents in your area, what would it be? And how would you address it?
Right now, it's snow removal. Right now, it's snow removal.
Well, I mean, and just being real, it is. With that, with that being the problem, how do you plan on addressing that? Do you plan on having a grant writer in your office specifically to help us write some grants, to get some money, and to help out with the resource issue that you're, you're speaking on? So how do you plan on addressing that?
Well, I myself, in the county executive's office, I have been the lead on acquiring a lot of federal money. I was the lead on the county receiving nearly $50 million to go towards transportation infrastructure to the New Carrollton metro station and along our Central Avenue connector trail. So I have a lot of experience when it comes to getting money, not just from the federal government, but also from the experience with grants in Prince George's County and, and through the state. So, yes, we will pursue any and all options to leverage state, federal, county resources so we can make sure that service delivery is efficient and gets to our residents.
So what made you run for office at this moment? Has faith played any role in your career and you specifically running for this position?
Well, faith plays a role in every bit of my life. I'm a Christian, and I am a member and also a trustee of the First Baptist Church of District Heights. My pastor is Dr. Bobby Manning, and not only is he a friend, he's a fraternity brother, and he has been a tremendous inspiration to me and brought me closer to God. And before we launched this campaign, he was one of the people that I talked to. And one of the first things that we did was pray about it. And running for office is not the easiest thing in the world. It is not.
One of the hardest things you can do in your life.
Absolutely. It looks like we're having a good time, but it's super stressful.
Yes, it is. Especially having a whole nother job and a family.
Absolutely. And prayer has really helped me get through it, really helped. We pray about it. My wife, my son and I, we pray every night. And the one thing that I do, and the one thing that gives me peace in this process, I don't pray for the win. And um, the one thing that I do and the one thing that gives me peace um, uh, in this process, I don't pray for the win. I pray that God's will be done.
Amen.
Yes.
Um, do you have anything final that you want to say? If this was like your last opportunity to speak to your voters, what uh, would you say to them going into the polling booth?
Well, I would say to them that um, I am here to work, I am here to get to work for them.
You can go and look at the camera.
Okay. I would say I'm here to get to work for you. I'm from Prince George's County, I'm of Prince George's County, I know Prince George's County. I've worked at every level of government uh, here in Prince George's County, serving county government, uh, county residents. And uh, I've worked in uh, every branch of government, I've worked in our judicial system to create second chances for attorney citizens. Uh, in the United States Senate, I advocated for transformational economic development headquarters, uh, uh, economic development projects like the FBI headquarters coming to Prince George's County. And uh, in the county executive's office, we've done everything from pandemic response, police reform and uh, quality economic development uh, for you. So I've done the work and uh, uh, don't let the gray hairs fool you, I, I'm, I'm not that old. So I bring some youth to the job as well and, and with, with youth comes innovation. So I, I, I have uh, the experience and the innovation factor uh, uh, to go with it. So I would certainly uh, welcome your support. The, the election day will be on March fourth, our early voting will be on uh, between February twenty sixth and March third. And if you uh, vote by mail, um, please mark that name, Ryan Middleton, right next to it for uh, county council, District Five.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate this.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
This is great.